Well, hey, thanks for it's nice to be here. I appreciate it. I appreciate the chance to share a little bit of something that I've enjoyed working with over the years and that's our our news program. And so it would have been nice to have some kids uh here with me, but um you know, a new group I have not we haven't had a lot of time together in the summertime, but um it's nice to you, but you'll see some faces. Um so what type of news is it's a it's a daily news program that we've had for over fifteen years. Uh so we have groups of important but pairs who are a part of this news program. And uh if I have some well do that since I just show you uh just some examples, then just ending with a short clip of a few different things um from way back like eight years ago to um someone that were just from this last spring. So these are um placed on YouTube. So that link there which while like small um just has all the videos, there's four hundred and some I think on here, uh but it's just we save them um upload them and they're they can be viewed by teachers. Uh sometime during that day, well, some do it right away in the morning, others just based on schedule and things might do a little bit later, but um the idea is if they get a chance to do it sometime during that day. Um used to be that used to be live. Actually, we we um would have a we had a cable system with their school at one time. You know, we're have that. We're able to actually do it right through our own cable system um in this whole small room off by never by the media center. And now it's um now we use Zoom. And so there's a like an application process. We had a hundred and fifty uh four fitters apply to be in the news team this year. We have will keep up when we will that down to about twenty just for people who's manageable. Uh what they do is they we have about four of them per week. And so we have like a a four or five week rotation depending on every kid that we have. I actually have them audition. So actually, you're on the news. Uh the big thing with this is they need to be able to read really well, especially name. I mean, just be able to look at a name and have some idea. Because some of the names um can be challenging. And so just being able to be fluent readers, uh kids who have some um charisma and just want you do well behind behind a camera with some pressure. Uh I mentioned used to be live. Now we just use Zoom. That was one kind of for the pandemic. We learned how to use Zoom. Simply record them using Zoom. Um now we can edit it. We can add things later. We typically record them the week before. Uh things that we include first, what date is the schedule um for specialists, long trip, a riddle of the day. Uh we do love wildlife stuff in connection to the refuge. And so we have some clips we throw in there birthdays. We do a tire fight tip of the day. Also connect with the special learning, any special events that might be going on, and then we end with the pledge of allegiance. So that's kind of what it looks like. I'm gonna share with you just a sample here, just a minute or two. These are just some um screenshots of some of the YouTube ones that were done. And so you can get get anywhere from seven, eight minutes is what they typically run. Um I mean, casted zoom format here. Typically, since you're reading birthdays, you have them show the birthday too, so they can um see that because it's like you said, some of these um can be difficult to pronounce. And so I want to let me see them as well. Um like I mentioned, also, the part of YouTube channel that we have is a lot of uh wildlife. And so we just take pieces of those in with what we're doing during the daily announcements. We do the FCL. So it's a great time for everybody to hear the same message. So we're talking about maybe how to calm down or um different social multiple learning skills. We can simply plug those in there. Here's your example clip. So the very first part of this from two thousand and fourteen, you're gonna know some kids who I think were seniors this year um who are we're on the on the news. And then we have um more recent this last uh this last spring. Yeah, play this. Hopefully, I didn't even check the sound, which I should have done, but that looks good here.
Oh, dang, dude.
That's it. That's kind of said that there were several different episodes and they're mashed together. That wasn't the poor Shabi video, but I think it five minutes just for Shabi. He's the first one that was just on the gate, but a great intense. Uh let's see. Um that's really all that I had. Just want to share with you kind of what things look like from the terrified news perspective. It's kind of fun to get those kids involved. They um give them an experience they probably wouldn't have. Be able to to do that, do the broadcasting and who knows, maybe someone will be, you know, go into that type of field as they get older. Any questions or thoughts or comments or anything I can answer for him?
Super cool.
It's fun. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, I said the kids really enjoy it.
Yeah.
They look forward to it every day.
Yeah. You know, it's nice that we have the media here that you're looking for a feature story. You know, I think it'd be really cool to do the feature story of the tradition that they do at the intermediate school with the news cast every day. That's pretty cool. All that they're interdisciplinary learning. I mean, they're they're learning about commu- communications and obviously the reading uh the communication side. They're doing the technology side, how to put things together, how to edit things. It's uh pretty awesome.
If you remember, um Kim Inslee, she used to do like what's cool in school in the school, don't think she actually came out to our school. Uh probably twelve years ago or so and did a feature on something. But then we kind of corralled her and said, would you mind doing an intro for us for the noon? So she did a welcome to TPN. And then we actually visited and the behind the scenes tour with the group at the Kellum Studio. So it's kind of fun to connect that way with with her.
I remember my one of the first weeks or two that I was in the district as a soup, I brought my guitar. I played a Johnny Cat song. John still teases me about.
Well, it was a wholesome county where the you know. Luckily, we weren't live. Oh, went dark. What happened? Good reaction. That was pretty good. You say it really well. It's just you don't know the content.
You know, a guy in prison, you know, whatever, a train's going by.
Yeah. And he wants to give me some good things.
Well, thank you, John. Thank you so much. You have uh lots going on. Oh, yeah. The buses are rolling in, ready or not.
Yeah, we're ready.
And uh oh, well, I'll be telling the board here in a minute that that we're thankful that our enrollment numbers are higher than we anticipated. And John is really um doing lots of analysis of the needs. And we had just uh I guess, supported the addition of another intermediate school teacher as well. So I I shared with you last week that uh we are going to move forward with another kindergarten teacher. Now we're looking at intermediate. So that's a whole lot of unexpected work that's just kind of thrown on John and his team.
No, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Uh there are no citizens comments. We'll move on to board member committee reports starting with Don.
Uh policy this evening.
And I had agenda planning.
I have nothing to report.
Um I have agenda planning and then policy coming also.
And nothing to report.
All right, and super ten.
Uh we met our deadline of getting our communications out to all of our families. I believe that was last Thursday, and we got all of our communications out to all of our team members on Friday. Lots of uh effort goes into doing that. So it's a huge sigh of relief. When we get that out, we move to all electronic uh enrollment, registration process and back to school a few years ago now. And I think we're getting better with that every year. And uh we we had several of our team members test that out. So we had few issues uh along the way. So that was good. As I mentioned to you, we're monitoring enrollment. Uh early indications are that our enrollment is higher than what we had projected. And uh we continue to get uh families calling you know, to register. So it it just uh seems a little different than decades ago when, you know, families tended to have their child know where they're going to go to school a month or two or or more in advance. And now seems like we get more and more, just even the week before school enrolling. So it makes things, you know, we're happy for that, but it definitely makes things tricky as we try and uh provide staffing based upon the number of students that we have. Uh one thing that I didn't have in our back to school communications was any information, uh updated information related to what the state still calls state return to school as it relates to pro COVID protocols. I'm very thankful that I did because the day after uh we sent communications out, the CBT came out with uh more information that was much less restrictive. And I knew that I was anticipating that happening. That's why I didn't put anything out. And I just indicated that we would follow up with information and a tell your times in a coming week. So we might get something out yet this week or early next week as it relates to that. But it'll be you know, basically the least restrictive kinds of things. Um and we'll be following that. Uh you know, one of the biggest pieces with that is uh no requirements for quarantine uh anymore. That uh I guess that was big, big news. So certainly, uh it's going to be more like back pre-COVID where we just are gonna need to ask for common sense that if your child is sick, uh they can't be in school, right? If they have a fever and, you know, multiple symptoms, you can't be in school, right? And that's just it's gonna go back to pre-COVID. And I think that's the way that people understood it always was. Uh we're we're uh waiting on some more drawings from our architects and engineers as it relates to the parking lot at the high school. And uh we look for that uh coming out soon. There's some voting that we're asking the board board to do on the funding for that this evening. Um that's more uh to get the meet the requirements to get the funding mechanisms. But uh we'll have time to do the engineering and the drawing. And we've had a couple of conversations with the city as well because as you know, there are multiple city streets that run into that high school parking lot that we need to, you know, work with them on. So we're also uh continuing our work to uh review options for private bathroom use at the high school as well. Uh some more of that work will happen. Might not happen uh until after we get the buses rolled in the first day of school, but we do hope to get that planning done so we can get something in the works for next summer. And also waiting uh for some CTE drawings for state of the art kind of CTE structure. So that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Uh we'll move on to approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
So we'll
Motion made by Deb, second by Chad. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Move on to discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes from eight to two twenty-two. Your motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Don, second by Eric Strandberg. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Oh.
Motion made by Chad. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion?
Just got a quick question on the um the meal thing for the adults.
Mm-hmm. Uh four seventy-five, four dollars and seventy-five cents. Actually, the state of Minnesota uh tells us what we need to have uh lunches at at minimum, and it is at four dollars and ninety-five cents. So we're just rounding that.
So we need that.
Yeah, so we meet the rules and gain help.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to the information section. And we have our presentation um from this is Princeton. You've come out, Ben.
So Mary is coming from volleyball practice and she's not here yet. She's our first up, but we'll
You'll be able, you'll have a good time. We just have
She's late for everything.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm Kim Young. I think I know everybody here. Uh this is Zach Pittson from Kids McCreations. And um basically, what kind of what Mary was gonna talk about was um how we kind of came to be um a, you know, this collaborative group together. Um and so she was asked by the city of Princeton to do some branding rework for them. And and so what she did is that upper left hand logo she created for the city of Princeton. And they worked uh they worked it in a way that it could be, you know, stay the same, but be manipulated for different things. So um these are different signs that are around, you know, the one out frontier in City Hall is the one in the middle, top middle, the one in the middle. Um we use for light up Princeton. Uh the one in the middle bottom there, we use for or is a a sign at Riverside Reeve Park. Uh age friendly is a age friendly Princeton is a organization under um under the city of Princeton. And they asked for her to make a logo as well. So she, the little O in there is their eight domains that they cover in the different colors of their domain. So she created that. And um then I Ben, I'm not sure which came first, if it was Mary and Stephanie that were talking about the doing a campaign or if he would come to all of us. I don't exactly remember the timeline on that, but it was a um kind of a discussion between Ben and myself at the chamber and uh the city of Princeton about coming together to tell our story. And uh and so that is how our group kind of started. And we brought we um had first worked with CL who the school district works with. And they brought a campaign to us. And then we had kind of already started the This is Princeton campaign campaign. We brought them both to our chamber membership to try to get some feedback from the community. And um everybody clearly wanted to go with the This is Princeton campaign. And so these are the um some of the logos that Mary came up with with this. So the idea is that um we were and we'll get more into detail with it. But the whole idea is This is Princeton, live here, work here. Because if we get people to live here and work here, they will go to school here, they will shop here, they will dine here. And so th- this is Princeton, live here, work here. And then we have all these different tag lines. I think we have, what do we narrow it down to eight or nine? I think we started with like thirty some different things. We were like, okay, we gotta, we gotta get this down. So here's some different, um we have learn here, shop here, play here, dine here, um worship here, serve here. Sure, I'm missing one or two, but those are some of them. And so like I mentioned, um it's a true collaboration. So when we ended up going with This is Princeton versus CL, we then decided to form a group with our um, you know, a representative from the Chamber of Commerce, which is me. Uh Mary Patno from Innovative Communication Strategies. And she does a lot of um social media work in her business. Zach Kitzman from Kitzman Creations. And he'll talk um about what he does and what he brings to our group, which is a lot. Emily McKinnon, who you know from Princeton Public Schools. And then whoever they hire for the new community development manager uh will also be a member of this collaboration. So why does Princeton need need marketing? Um and the reason is because people are telling our story for us. Um and I think we all um we all can think of um times very recently that where Princeton has been in the news. And it's not something that we want to be in the news for, but it's the way that it is. There's nothing we can do about it. Sometimes it just goes and it and we can't stop the train. And so when we can but what our mission here with This is Princeton is especially in times like this, that we be the loudest voice. That when people for the school district, for example, when people are out there saying terrible things about the school district, we are a louder voice saying positive things about the school district and sharing all the great things that our district does and everything in our community that happens here. Uh that's, you know, one of the ideas of our of our um committee. And then Facebook groups, this is just an example of one where somebody said, humor me. If there is a proposal brought to the city about a public outdoor pool, would you be in support? Reasons why or why not would be helpful, too. It had a hundred and ninety-seven comments, and it was very interesting to follow. And we all know that these Facebook groups can really kind of be a cesspool of negativity. But what we found very interesting as a group, we went through and kind of underlined things and people, it went way far away from whether or not we want an outdoor pool, way far away. Um you know, our roads are terrible. Nobody plows. If this is bad, that is bad. And then it would be like, this community has nothing for kids. The next comment would be, this community has nothing for seniors. This community just favors you. This community just favors seniors. It was it was incredible. People um said something, you know, I kind of, Mary, I already gave your introduction. I thought you did my first. I well, I kind of did. Okay, okay. Um, sorry, Mary. And so um anyway, so um then like with the pool, for example, somebody posted, you know, there's a pool at the health club and there's a pool at um the school district. And not that, you know, it's not outdoor, but there are two pools here in our community. And somebody said, I had no idea. I've been driving to Foley. Thanks. So that's the other thing. People are, they're spreading misinformation. They don't know what's happening. So we need to reel this in. We really do. Um and this was just one example. I'm sure you guys can think of a million things you've seen on Facebook that isn't true. Um so and I'm gonna let Zach take over here at this part.
Hello, my name is Zach Rad. It's been with Kids and Creations. And earlier, uh they had asked me to come along to help with some marketing and some media. Uh I kind of specialize in data analysis and in marketing. And I'm able to do a bunch of like media production and photography. So it is meant hand in hand. And when they were talking about how do we make this place a better place to live or um be louder in a sense than what people opposed, that what people say is that if we use the marketing and social media marketing that we could you know, share the true facts or you clear up this communication and stuff like that. So what we have on the board here is is Princeton a good place to live? And this is would be a common question. Um if you're gonna move somewhere, right? And before you make a big decision or move somewhere or make a big purchase, usually do some research. Where would you usually go to do your research?
Like Google.
Google, YouTube, a friend, right? So if you were to type this in on Google, um is Princeton a good place to live or a safe place to live? Um this is what comes up right away. So Princeton is a nice town away from the big cities. However, there's not much for family activities, um maybe a little bit of horse keeping, bowling. Um, you know, if you don't mind driving a distance for jobs, it would do, it's not bad. Okay, that's not very, that doesn't sell me on moving here. Um so we wanted to do something that we wanted to be the louder voice. We wanted to show up on Google. If we if we search this or someone has wants to bring their kids here to our school, they're probably gonna do some research. They're probably gonna go to Google, probably gonna search something similar to this. Um and we want to have a better result than that. So if you make slide um is a safe place is um coming from a lot of work in the background, I went to school, go on course with in analysis. This is definitely one of the things I'm gonna search upon my move somewhere is how safe is it? Um, I don't think this is correct, but it says it's one of the highest crime rates in America compared to all communities of all sides. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? But we all know that's that's not true.
Yeah, so somebody had to put that out there. Right?
And it's the first result. And it's like, yeah, grabbing porn on Google. And it's Princeton, Minnesota, as they pay for live. And that is the very first thing that pops up.
Let's just say those they're not a, you know, accredited source. I'm just saying, maybe where they were, it doesn't matter. It's someone out there putting out information. And that's why I think we need to be ready to be putting our information out there. We want to put our word over our best foot and our image. Good, everything now is digital. Google, social media, like we gotta be in front of this task. So um so next slide.
And what happens with this too is that I was clicking on some of the you know, how is this getting up so high? And it's because for like for safe, um it's security companies trying to get your business. And so they're making it look, you know, every town in America is the has the highest crime rate. So you better get a, you know, security system in your home. But that it's it's there.
So we wanted to use some marketing um to help this campaign and spread what we wanted to share. Um clear some confusion with people not knowing that we have a couple of lakes around town or beaches or uh whatever it is. Share events or awareness for events that we might have or upcoming stuff like a parades or school or sports or whatever it might be um educating people and all the stuff we can do on social media for not a lot of money, we can market and get in front of people or or a lot of people for not a lot of money. So for a Google campaign, um we can do things like this where we can set up Minnesota Best Places Live twenty twenty-two. Um that's my campaign. I just did a preview of it. But that's the kind of stuff that we could have show up on Google instead of some of these other things. So best places to live, you can see I Google that. And usually if you put like these blogs or a business will put up a blog about how bad or how you might need a security system or whatever it is, we can have our blogs or our website or our YouTube link to a video about Princeton or anything like that. Um some more stuff we wanted to do from the media side of things for school sports and activities. Um for like app purposes or video ads or just posters around town was, I don't know how long ago it was that we had a youth poster. How long ago it was that we had a youth poster that we actually talked about that, I remember seeing it was like a football, high school football kid. Like shaking hands or something with like a youth, youth kid. Like the kid was looking up to him and it was like, it was very impactful, I still remember it when I was in middle school or whenever, like it just stuck in my head. Um so more things like that maybe for youth and sports and uh really push or present uh. Sports and academics, stuff like that, um the sportsmanship videos or graphics, we can do videos um with. You know, either the football team or hockey team, tennis, jazz choir, any of that stuff. And we could put line causes together, we could do fun videos, kind of like we watched earlier, um just a little more. Either upbeat or some more editing and we can use those videos on social media and on YouTube and Google. And share who we are as Princeton and what our school district offers and what our students are like and what our teachers are like and like. We can really put ourselves out there and there's not a lot of towns that do that and I'm surprised because. I mean, it's like, it's a blue ocean, like completely, um businesses are doing it and a lot of personal brands are doing it and. I didn't see why not, why can't we, so and then photos too with photography in my background photography. Um we wanna offer and just capture more stuff at the school, um take a level of professionalism to. What we got going on in our town, so. Some of the social media ads, so let's say we go and make some of these videos, I want to be sports and make these posters and. Oh blah, what are we gonna do with them, where are they gonna go? Well, this is a screenshot of what it would look like on Facebook, this is in my back end of my manager, uh Facebook Business Manager account. For a graphic, um we wanna run an ad just in Minnesota, maybe we wanted to. Reform more people about what was happening in our town and what we got going on for. Five, ten dollars a day, we can reach three to eight point nine thousand people, that's pretty impressive. A lot of people, a day, single day, um so in a month, we're talking. Was an almost half a million people that we can put on messaging column. News or what someone's done on Facebook that they didn't fact check or whatever. The video views here, so that on that side, that is the graphics and photo stuff, side of things on the right is. Video views and it's set to, I have it set to um playthrough, so it's like. Instead of someone watching just two seconds of the video, it's Facebook can actually show what you want. To people that are more likely to watch a video in length entirely, so you actually message across. Same amount of dollars, five to ten, we're looking at two hundred eighty-eight to eight hundred and thirty-two views a day and those are. Like completion views, more than like fifty percent uh completion rate, which is huge, like if you had something to share or. Whatever it might be, and then a lot of people we can read, and like I said, it's only five hundred bucks, like, pretty good. Um what we're doing currently, to tell, what we're doing right now is we're building these ads, build our social media, um starting to build it up. This is Princeton Facebook page, um posting some stuff for. School and just trying to be relevant with the town, what's going on, uh we have an Instagram page as well. Uh we are currently shooting interviews as as of now, last week and previous and so on for. Uh businesses and places and I think we had something scheduled for the Spanish immersion. So we wanted to do that, so that's a huge thing, um that I think we got heard and that's something that we could share to a bunch of people in our town and other town. In our state, like what we offer. Um our website, we are working on doing our best, we did, um. I wish we had a screenshot of before and after, this is what we have right now. Our goal is to get another website up and running. Um just cause with technology now and we can create a lot of cooler graphics. Um tools of one of the biggest things that I wanna use for the new website is our analytics, so earlier I said, I talked about data management. When we do marketing, we're not only getting in front of people, um but we're also able to grab. Um analytics and data and really learn about our audience and who's our talent and what they like and what they, like what they're accustomed to, we can use that data. And really uh use it to curate uh stuff for them. So can't do that on this website, uh there's some things that are allowed and not allowed, so our goal is to get a new website up.
On our bucket list.
We have a contract, Princeton has a contract with this for another year and a half, so we can't get out of this one yet, but.
Yeah, this is the city website, the city is Princeton, Princeton Minnesota dot org is this website, so this is just a landing page that we created off of their website.
And then if you, what I was trying to do is if you click on any of these links, um you can, you know, get to different things, you know, work here, there'd be available jobs. Learn here, we go to the school district, um so um. Yeah, the hope is that we can start a separate, this is Princeton webpage and then have the link here, we have the chamber website, hopefully we could put it on the district website. And just have our own separate um website, cause it would, it's something, we kind of have to do different things. This is like a city government website.
Yeah, one of the big, the kind of like a um. Put this in picture with analytic portion of why it's important, say we have man running about. Let's just say it was about school or sign new kids up for school or school sports or something like that, we can see how much that video someone watched. Where they're from and if they were to watch more than fifty percent, you would say that they're more than likely probably interested in the video, right? If you watch something, if you spend your time watching something for fifty percent, you probably somewhat interested. Or if they were to watch that video to fifty percent or whatever it is, market we want, or if they landed on a website. We can then see, we can track and retarget them with another ad that said, hey, we see that you're interested, not so much like. In your face today, you went or watched it for five seconds, what happened like a minute, but um that's the power that we can use with some of the data stuff as we can. See who's kind of interested and you can get it done, like, hey, are you interested in in such and such or in sports and a business or living here? You know, you you've checked out uh work here like five times, obviously they're, they might be looking for a job here, so we could send them something that's relatable. So it's very powerful and you can't, can't uh.
And I think too it's worth mentioning that if we can bring this all to this one website and this one committee. I mean, like Jason, do you have time to check analytics, you know, during your day? I mean, I don't think probably there's a single employee at the school district who can do that, so it's a nice thing to have, you know, that that we can help that, help with that. Um so this is some, some of the things that we've done so far with this is Princeton, um we kicked it up at the Rum River Festival Parade. And and we um we got a banner made, this is Princeton, live here, work here, and then we picked an ad, well, and we asked people specifically. To carry the different signs and so like here on the right is Lydia Erickson who works at Mars and so she wore her Mars shirt to shop here. And we've got some um women from uh Roster Rescue to serve here, Heavenly Fresh Dine here and then Faith works with a lot of businesses. We had her represent work here, um and then we asked a little Lincoln who's going into kindergarten this year to walk with one of our current grads for learn here. And then we had a couple retirees that carried the retire here sign. And so that's how we kicked it off and what, and then we all handed out these little flyers on the left-hand side. That um the QR code then goes to the website uh for this is Princeton. And then we use it, you know, I'm using it at the chamber as much as I can, um we had our, we actually had a theme this year, we this is Princeton for the Rum River Festival. Um let's see, oh, we have a billboard, uh I don't know if you can see it in the middle of the state there, it says Home of the Tigers. And uh so this billboard is, it used to be on one sixty-nine south on the electronic billboard certified by. Trying to catch the commuters going south and now it's on one sixty-nine north at the Fairgrounds. Uh sign out there, so that will be up till the end of the year and we can change that for free. Yeah, um we can change that graphic however many times we want it.
Yeah, yeah, it's really easy to set up.
So watch for that, then we uh purchased a billboard at the Princeton Speedway. And we decided to focus on dining here because we figured most of the people sitting in the stands, that's probably what they would do if they were visiting Princeton, that they would dine here. So it's hard to get a photo at the racetrack, but it's there and I, when I saw this, I thought maybe we shouldn't have gone with white. Cause it looks like it's just completely dirty, but it's there.
You'll have to remind me.
Yeah, uh we also uh took out an ad in the sports calendar this year, uh this is just a sample from last year on the right-hand side. So that calendar will be hanging all over town and we'll have a add in there uh to, you know, this one is kind of learn here, play here. Uh for the this is Princeton campaign and Mary made the logo with, you know, kind of more sports for the sports calendar. Um and this is just an example of one of the posts that we made, there was a, somebody had made a post congratulating the new brewery in town opening. And underneath that was comments about, really, we need, like, we need another brew, you know, or we need another place to drink and we'd have this and I was like, are you kidding me? Like there is a, you know, there's a new business going into town, people and it, everything, you know, new businesses, it's like a, you know, snowball effect. It it impacts us all in a positive way and I just like, I went to work and this is sort of a rage post, I call it. Together, cause I was just so mad, I'm like, why can't we support one another in this community and so this is just kind of an example of something that. That this is the kind of thing that we're gonna do to try to drown out the negativity. Um and this guy, this was a popular post, it got shared several times and uh so that's kind of an example of what we would try to do, a very small example. Uh and then um we've been putting together, Zach and I have been going out to businesses, he had asked me to contact some businesses. To see if anybody would be interested in being in a video about their workplace, working here, living here. Um because there are some people that have ended their jobs for many, many years and so I reached out to some people and. Zach said, how many, I said, how many businesses do you want me to get a hold of Zach and he said, as many as you want, yeah. So I sent out a big email and everybody said yes and so um we've been going around doing interviews and they take it. Hours, an hour and a half or so, so this is just a rough draft of sort of what we're thinking about doing um for videos. But this is hours and hours and hours of video and this is just some of the people that we talk to, so this is just a little sampling.
Oh, is this the end?
I think so.
Okay, I just, did you talk about how September is gonna be learn here or?
No, not yet.
It's coming up.
I think we can have some commentary after we watch the video.
So that, that was kind of just like. That was just like an all real um highlight of like all the different interviews that we've been doing. And this is something that I would like to implement too with school, so students and teachers and sports and activities and. And you can see where that can go, like that's, and then not only is that a video that we can use um marketing, but it's also an archive. That uh we can have for as long as we want, like that stuff that we can have forever for whatever we wanted to use it for. Um and another thing too is with the content and the photos and the day that we shoot, that stuff will be accessible too for for Princeton's. Use for whatever they might need it for, for in a newspaper or like someone around the school or a poster or. Um it just very multi positive video opportunities.
Zach, I just put on my calendar, I'm gonna give, give you a call and I'll also can talk.
Yeah.
More about some of this stuff.
Yeah, I would love that, I I also would really like to, any of ideas or um. Lots of you guys have on, on up like ideas that we should do for video or to bring more people in or a good idea to. Highlight our school or what's going on, because I am also busy and like I don't always know what's going on, so I might not know the newest or current thing that we might wanna. Present or such.
And that's what's great about having Emily in our friend too, to bring this content or, you were gonna say about September too. Oh, I was just gonna say, so all of these different, um the live here, work here, serve here, so September is gonna be, learn here is gonna be our focus. So we're really gonna focus on the school district for September, um and we're just in the planning for spots of that. So you guys have any data that you want us to share out and Emily can get us probably that too, but. So that's the video where you're talking about it, would it be really cool for Zach to go around and get videos from um players at practices and get interviews and some interviews. Uh uh coaches, he'll hit up some of the games and some of it we can frame where we're having like a, we wanna show like positivity of everything. Like a parent, you know, walking up to a kid after the game and just saying like, I'm really proud of you, tough loss, but so fun, you know, maybe here.
We don't lose, Mary.
Oh. Or like a parent walking up to a coach and saying, you know, especially in those losses or those great runs or something, just showing a parent supporting their coach. Or a parent, you know, their role is to cheer on their kids, support them.
So we were talking today about.
We make something like this and just blast it out there, just something really cool, warm, fuzzy.
It will always be something positive, so we talked today about the parents, you know, and how they can get, I'm really, I don't know if you guys have ever experienced that. So our campaign would be more about just showing the positive side of parents and how, you know, they're acting, so it's not like it, you know. This is how you should behave, parents, it's more of a, you know, positive approach to um, everything will be positive, hopefully, so.
And I don't know if they shared that, but through, you know, we've been working together now since January and with Zach since later on, but um. You know, we, we've learned that it's okay to acknowledge bad things that happen or things that don't go your way. And it's important to acknowledge them, but that's where you wanna start a ca- a positive campaign, so if there's something bad that had that happened or that brings a lot of news. Like the situation um that has recently happened, you know, you acknowledge it and then. We could like blast like it would have been, and we were kind of like, oh, we're just about to explode this program, but we could like run a campaign on. Something else where we're kind of washing out the negative and float or floating or uh. It put in the positive in people's feeds and flooding, that was the one that was a big part. Overshattering the nega- negative, be louder on the positive, so things like that and that's what we're here for, things that happen in the school district. We said the same thing to the city, something that, you know, was driving a lot of negative attention, they, you know, you call us and be like, can you get something going to. To make people focus on something else, be louder, we need to be the louder person and that's what we're here for, for the district too.
I think it's just, you know, acknowledging how great a community we are and have pride in our community, right? And say, and saying good things about where we are and it is such a great place and. We, we started doing, I, that was one thing that I noticed, this is my fifth year as superintendent here, I noticed that within like the first couple of weeks of being here. The um the kind of common trend of people talking, saying negative things about just everything. And I'll, you know, we do have, and I'll say it, um some Facebook community pages that I believe is. Is a cesspool, it's evil, it's pure hatred and it's full of um lies. And if, if you really want to find out the opposite of the truth, you would go there, so we, we need to be very intentional. In sharing positive pieces about every aspect of our community and and there is. And this is in every area, we're not alone in this, you know, every business, every team, everything has to go through this. So, you know, it, it was nice, we've been putting efforts in place now for a few years with different campaigns and. Um trying to show the positivity and and positive posts. Uh we started having conversations about, you know, this, we shouldn't be doing this in isolation, there's so many things that we have in common between the city. And the Chamber of Commerce, you know, because we are all just one, right? Um so how can we work together in that and that's where we started, you know, we're working more together and, you know, we are contributing to this. Um with some of our talent, but also financially as well, and I would tell the board that this is something. That I believe we will have to consider investing more financial dollars into. Um in terms of the creation of the different videos for the, the this is Princeton campaign, but also um. But also things that we can do for our school district as well, you know, so um. It's something we're gonna have to spend some money to do.
And a, and a mentor was telling me like if you ever wanted to maybe like. And a, and a mentor once told me like, if you ever wanted to maybe like sell a product or or whatever it might be like. If no one knew about it, how would you ever get someone to buy it, like awareness, like people just don't know. And if you can't make any actions on something there, you can't pick something if you don't know or don't see it. And back to the beginning, we were on Google. I wanted to, my goal is like, when someone were to type in. Google Princeton or is this Princeton a good place to live? I want those things like those YouTube videos and our blogs and our website and all that other stuff to come up first. And a neat thing is now Google and YouTube are there together. They own their, uh. They're both on business now. So when you post videos and upload videos to YouTube, your SEO, your search engine optimization ranking will go up. The videos that we had posted on YouTube that we linked to a blog that we now have on Google are gonna require in a search result. Some more videos, more follow that can get actually higher up. Just like I said in the beginning, being like that louder voice and making sure that we're putting our foot that we want forward instead of saying it was.
And one thing that we can talk about is because we are partners in this. I do think that this is like some of the videos that you create. We can provide free advertising potentially on our scoreboards and things that are different events. So that's something that we should just follow on.
Thank you guys for your time.
Strong work, thank you.
You know, when you live here, you get complacent about, you think it's wrong.
All right, we'll move on to the action portion of our meeting. Eleven eight, the basement bond and call for public hearing. We can go ahead and uh, make the motion and then there's an exception that we can do it during discussion.
Make a motion to accept the resolution relating to the proposed property tax payment for parking lot reconstruction and then putting improvements. And calling for a public hearing as presented.
Motion made by Eric Strandberg, uh, second by Chad, is there any discussion?
Um, I did attach an email from ICS to show that, um, we, we just didn't make up the numbers. So we'd originally talked about moving into two point five million, but then when we started really looking at that high school lot. Uh, which is the bulk of. The cause. Reevaluate that. So just so you knew that, um. We just didn't come up with that out of the air. And, um, if as we get further into the planning. Um, before we sell the bond, we can always pull another down, but we can of course increase in range. Um, I also attached today the um, debt service impact. It's the little orange. Boxes on top of all the rooms and um, as you see for twenty-three, we're still keeping that levy. Flat across and then there's that room to talk about what uh, that might mean for us regarding CTE. Space in the future. Um, so. That because of the cost of it and us wanting to look at a CTE area, it's a fourteen year bond.
Great, any other, um, questions? More information? We don't have roll call this, right?
Yes, we do, we do, okay.
So we have a. First and a second, um, all in favor will take by roll call, starting moved on. Yes. So yes.
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 And yes.
Motion here. Um, resolution for a kind of election, do I have a motion?
It's almost.
Motion made by Deb, second by Chad, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Um, identify official with authority. And um, is there a motion to approve that? Motion made by Don.
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg, is there any discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. There were no additions to the agenda. I need a motion, um. To close the meeting to discuss negotiations, real estate management amendment.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second, motion by Eric, second by Don. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close, same sign, we are now in closed session.